Okay, work session. Let's see if we can get to a bunch of stuff here fairly quickly. Discussion on architect for fire station Rod.
I have had my talk with Vernon Architect that wants to take over part of doing the study on the future.
Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. That's all for a way to move. That's some information here I'd like to pass out early quickly.
Bye.
For everybody.
And I'm not sending your packet right now. I'm just putting it all in a box in my room. So.
Sure, he appreciates that.
So I have the good portion of running into Fire Chief not sold at the Fire Chiefs, like you mentioned, same club. Runnin' Architects and Engineers is based out of North Dan Cato and we do about 25% of what we do is municipal work. We do a lot of fire stations. The principal of our firm, Corey Brunton, is an actual firefighter. So we look at stations a lot differently than we think other design firms look at those types of facilities, designs from an actual hands-on purpose. We've been kind of growing out of the reputation to be able to get fire stations done, really being conscientious of the budget. We've got a number of stations under design right now that for years and years haven't been able to get done because of budget constraints. And we just see a lot of situations out there where design firms are coming in and projecting the budgets that just are unreachable. And we have, we like to say we have a special place in our heart for fire departments and EMS because we are one. So we try and help get these things done on a realistic budget so that when the budget gets put together, it's not unreachable and it's realistic for the city. So one of the things we've done is we found a number of sources for grants to get feasibility studies done. And we helped write the grant letters to basically get the feasibility studies funded. To give you a snapshot of what needs to be built eventually and to help you do the long-term planning as far as the size of the facility, how the community is going to grow, that type of thing. So the things you see in the packet that I put together, threw together some preliminary information that we've done with some other fire departments. We come in as a firm, we do a lot of this upfront work prior to having, being hired or even having a contract in place. We try and help project. If you have a site that you have in mind, we do quick preliminary layouts just to see how the site would fit on the property, how the traffic would flow, if it's the right place and town based on the calls, where they're coming from, that type of thing. As you can see, the very first one in the packet is the Hudson Fire Department we're working with right now. We put together budgets for the building itself based on their wishes and then also an operating information as far as the energy calculations and also the long-term planning for maintenance of the building itself. We do that upfront just to give you an idea of what that building's obviously going to cost to operate over the years. So it gives you a real good snapshot of what that building is going to cost you. A lot of the layouts that you see in there are basically what we've taken, the lots that are available that the city is thinking about, we've laid the stations out on those sites just to show you all the traffic flow and safety patterns and all this stuff. We try and basically, our past customers become our marketing for us. If you go the way back, there's two brokers and then there were two stations that we've done in Halls recently. Both of those facilities were having issues trying to get the stations done because of the budgets that were proposed to them. The city just couldn't afford the budget. So we came in, we're called in actually to see what we could do in those situations. And to look at both of those processes, the first one, the prime city one that's listed there. Two of the firms have been in, studied that and they came back with budgets of about $3.4 million dollars. And we were able to get that down to $1.265. And we actually gave them more features in the building than the other firms had proposed. Same thing on Jackson. Those budgets were upwards of $4 million dollars, we came at $1.85. Again, we gave them a facility that was more complete than we had before. If you were to call either one of those stations or fire chiefs, they're going to give us a warm recommendation on the buildings, on the usability and also the design. So very budget conscious, that's how we design. So we come in, we're mostly concerned about the amount of square footage that's needed to accommodate what the fire department's trying to accomplish. We establish a budget with people and we design backwards to make sure that the space needs are taken care of and then we go into the level of, you know, architectural design and any of those types of facilities. So I guess what we propose is starting with a feasibility study with the grants, if we can find the grants to get the feasibility studies paid for for you and give you that snapshot of what the city would need, meeting needs are and monitor the inside of the fire station. Is that in center, Rod?
Yep.
So you're looking to do, you said feasibility study, you got grants to do this?
Yes, some of the things we do differently than the other firms that are out there too is we, because we have a passion for fire stations, we often look for the grants that are available out there. Right now I am familiar with three sources for grants that would help us do the feasibility study. I have two sources that will help eventually with actual funding, partial funding of the building itself. We also go out to local industry and state industry. There's a lot of sources out there that if you just go ask, especially on the fire EMS type situation, there's a lot of people that are looking for good places to put their money. And we go out and look for that for you and then fill the facilities. We also have, we bring finance sources to help the city. We're working with, actually the city of Loretto right now, got a financing source for, for nonprofit or municipal funding. We've got them right now, eight packages that's got an industry of all, 3%, so 20%. So we help bring a lot of the sources together to get the stations done. We look at it as a long-term situation. So we like to come in, we like to be hired as a professional service member. We oversee the process, the construction process, we control the budgets and everything else. But we look at it as a long-term play. If we get involved early on and can help walk through the process, even if it takes by 10, 15 years, we like to get involved early on to try and guide the process through and it all starts with feasibility study. And then we become your advocate with the process. So we watch the budgets, we watch the construction process, oversee the construction process, whether it be construction management process or a general contractor process, whatever the business needs. So we have a lot of history of success and a long list of references in this area that would attest to our prowess of creating the stations that are effective, but cost-effective as well.
Any questions? And so looking for grants, is there some upfront cost to?
No, there's no cost to the city itself. We, again, and I'll kind of explain a little bit more of how our process works and it's quite different than other, than other design firms as well. We'll come in and do a lot of this upfront stuff. There's no charge for that. We're doing it, you know, in essence, and also getting hired to do your station. That's really what it's all about. But we try and help, and it really gets down to, again, brother of the fire people and our passion for that. So we try and help the process along. We see that in most cases, the fire department, usually the last place that is funded. It's always kind of afterthought. So we see that happen quite a lot.
Not here.
So we try and help the process along and again, like I said, it's a long-term process. We like to get under contract when we can, but we don't get paid, our contracts stay so we don't get paid unless we're actually, we actually create a project and we start designing. So we do a lot of this upfront stuff. If it just doesn't come to fruition, we don't get paid for it. Unless we've actually done work that you guys tell us to get on. So we do a lot of upfront work, a lot of, we spend a lot of hours trying to help you get these things done because we just see them. Something that's a little bit unique about our firm also is we have, along with the architectural side, we have all of the engineering disciplines under our own roof except for the civil engineering. We have a very tight relationship with Golden End actually. We do a lot of architecture for that firm. We're both based out of NACU. So we do a lot of work together from that standpoint. But we'll typically go to the local civil engineer because they understand the dirt and the workings of the city and that type of thing. So we usually run on that. But we like to bring them under our umbrella because we do that everything starts with the dirt. So we take care of everything after that, but everything starts with the ground and if there's an issue in any part of that building, a lot of people are going to come to us. And that's why we really work. But I guess getting back to what we'd like to see is like to bring you the sources for the grant to get a feasibility study done. That's at no cost. And that gives you the ability to long-term plan for the fire department and the earth.
Is it a good idea to do a feasibility study when you know you probably aren't going to be moving forward with a project for several?
Yeah, they all project out quite easily. So you'll see, as a feasibility study, you can see what the project needs as it goes out, you know, in the coming, probably two or three years. So it'll show you what your, if you're going to include what you have right now, it'll show you it or it's not. It'll show you that as well. And then it'll project, the process obviously, but it'll project out as to how the needs will grow over the years.
Okay, I think, any questions?
No, I just want to make sure I understood what he said is you don't get paid unless he's under contract.
Right.
And he's going to try to get the grants.
Yep.
So that we can do the study.
Yep.
And the study would not cost us anything because of the grants.
That's when we're going to enter into a contract with you, is after we got the grant.
Yeah, and again, even after the contract, again, if it doesn't become a project or if we're not directly doing work and then we don't get, we don't get paid. So we're basically here, we do this differently than our other projects because we have a place here for our fire department. So we do a lot of this upfront work to kind of help those processes get started.
So if you get the grants, then that's the money that you use to do the feasibility study?
Right, so what happens is.
And the grants aren't like matching grants or?
No, no. They would be, and I have to call them, like typically they pay for, they typically pay for a hundred percent of the study. The study is usually in that five or six hundred dollars and something like that. And they typically will pay for the whole feasibility study.
It's been a long time since we talked about this, but don't we already have plans drawn up for this?
We have a plan, but the thing that his family came up with is it's a feasible spot because there's been rumors going into the city of the cities that sell that piece of land for something else, where you have one. And I think we do this and this is kind of maybe, it's going to say that piece of land is not the right one.
So I understand that that's a piece of the study. If you're talking about the EDA, they did talk about, discuss, is that the right spot for the fire department?
Yes.
And would it be better for the fire department to get a different piece of property up maybe in that?
And that's what he's doing.
They didn't, they didn't talk about just selling the piece of land and leaving you guys sit without anything though. I mean, that's not.
Oh, that's very strange to me.
That wasn't the intention. I talked to Lois about that too in an email. That was not the intention at all.
Okay, but that's kind of, you know, I don't do a good, just walk around and start doing the best that we can. And it'd be a good place to start.
Takes into account, I'm sorry, takes into account traffic flow and the issue of safety from that standpoint. And also the feasibility study will actually look at where the calls are. So we're trying to, in a sense, to all, to all the, that number of years to say where all the calls are.
And in that EDA conversation, that was part of it too. There was a concern from the EDA that that might be such a busy area, should we get the fire department off of this intersection here? Or is that a good spot to have it?
Typically you like to be by the main arteries, but not necessarily right on the main streets.
Okay.
And that, no study will show all that for you as well.
Then with the next step, do you come back to the food council and gather some of the, to, to, for the grants to put in to the feasibility study?
Yes.
I seen in this one, the Hudson, he had the cost of the facility. He had a breakdown of the annual cost for the facility. And I think that's important for the city as we move forward in budgeting, you know, we can start saving now, knowing where we got to be in ten years or five years, where we want to get there.
That's exactly what the city of Hudson's doing. Our project probably is going to happen for three, four, five years. But they need, and it is a slow-moving process. We understand that. So they asked us to take a look at what they were doing. Their station was actually built probably more than, it was built to be advanced, but with the change in equipment and everything else, now the garage or nothing, you know, that's a structural change. So we looked at the distance to the, and all that you see there, we've done without any contract, any agreement. So that's what I'm trying to project through. We do a lot of that without any type of contract. But the long-term planning, we see that city plans, that's one thing that's reflected is the long-term operating costs of the building itself. We look at the budgets of buildings, buildings, the long-term costs of operation of buildings. We like to design, we prefer to do panels that are pre-bleached over. For hundred year buildings, they're more energy efficient. They're more inexpensive to wreck, but they're, they're, so we'll see a lot of our designs, a lot of pictures that you see that are actually pre-bleached. But that's come over the years of looking at and comparing the cost of, what the operating costs of a pre-bleached building. We follow the pre-bleached buildings that are more efficient.
Were you able to project on a building should be built, you know, right now, we're not growing.
Yeah.
We kind of know we need a building.
Yep.
But what kind of a budget, at what point do you say, okay, we have to build it?
Well, that's the feasibility study. We have to tell you that.
It will tell you that.
Yeah, it does. It projects out. It'll take into account the, even though you're not going right now, the weather trends and it will factor all that in as to how the trees roll and how the rainwater controls it basically. And it'll project out. I think the study's a lot, it's like three days, I believe, and give you a snapshot of what's going to happen and what the needs are going to be. And the other thing is, you know, we can, we'll do the same thing for you that you see here. We do the feasibility study, we get grants to do that. We're going to come back and we're going to, we're going to, we're going to look at, sit down with the fire chief and say, what are your needs, what kind of your program? We'll do some of the sketches you see there, just those quick floor plan sketches. Give us an idea of floor-to-ceiling prices. We'll be able to come back and give you the same thing we gave us and give you a budget based on the needs. We'll give you the operating costs as well. So we'll have an idea. So you have a long-term plan. You can start planning for the needs of the building. And the feasibility study, again, we might do that early on. We do the feasibility study and that. And if that does come back, we really, we really, we're up to that. It may totally change what, what your eye is looking for in building. I think we do that study. But we'll, we'll be able to give you a pretty close snapshot of the needs we're going to look at.
Do you compare available properties and see which the best location would be?
Yeah, and we'll do this, you know, you see the, in the packet, again, there's some layouts where we've got the proposed size of the building, block on the line. We'll do that to help you select a lot as well. So we have all forms you're looking at. We'll take the square foot requirements and weigh them on a lot just to see how easily we just put that building in that lot. And then we look at it from a safety standpoint as well as feasibility as far as the square foot is fitting on a lot. So you look at, I'll find a good example for you here. You look at, I think the Fergus Falls is a good example. You look at that property, we showed a, we showed an aerial of the property itself and then three different layouts. But if you look at the layouts, one of the important things that seems to be overlooked a lot is the traffic flow and the separation between the public and the emergency services people. So if you look at those, this particular layout shows you, emergency comes in, same entrance is the public. If the emergency goes out on its own, you don't have interference of traffic between public and emergency services. That's some of the things that we, we look at from a practical standpoint because we, the principal of the fire departments, we look at it from more of a practical, hands-on process.
With the fire service changing, I don't know if it's changing yet, but changing in the future, do you consider regionalized fire departments at all?
Yeah, you know, we're, like Loretto's fire department is five cities, I believe, right now. And that's a private company, but it's five cities. We're starting to see a lot more conglomerational stations and cities. Sometimes it's going to happen as fast. Again, a lot of time comes down to budget and how fire departments need to be within that loss. And a lot of them, you know, and a lot of them, we're seeing, just out of necessity, we're seeing a lot of them come together, but those are going to be years.
Can be.
But you're seeing some of that happen because of budget constraints. It affects, a lot of times it affects response times in areas that are, and then what typically you see happen then is once you do a conglomerate, also, you know, another area you're going to own, you need a satellite station, so it's not a whole service station, but it's going back to getting people more, or getting response back in the areas where.
That's where trends are seen, trends where, yeah, probably in fire department.
That's a big, that's a big issue right now. If your department is full, you're really, really lucky. It's getting harder and harder to, especially in the long-term situation.
So that's the reason I bring that regionalized up is because they're calling mutual aid. Some of these calls already for help.
Yep, yep. You know, it's really funny. I have a neighbor in Coquay. Coquay has a big territory. They got homeowners who are trying to keep it. You know, we don't see it in, 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 it's not, not in there, but they have it up there. They have a large territory. So they're, they're, they're providing, I think they have four or five ownerships that they're involved in. And they have a casino there and everything else. So they have the meat port, but for a small unit that supports some of that people. So they had to reach out to some of the online areas and casino connection. It was just part of the, part of the.
Okay, anything else? I think we probably have this back on the agenda next time until you have to go ahead.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for the time.
Okay, it's 8:30. How much for you to go or you want to?
The rate study, I think we can really put, why don't we do a rate study? Want me to do that one quick for you?
Yes.
Okay, here we go. If you all recall, we had talked about doing a rate study. Well, the name's been under a rate study. It's going to pay us a fee of 17,000. ABLO will do it for 13. A-Lers came back at 8,000. And Minnesota Water Water will do it for 4,500. However, Minnesota Water Water will come in and work with city staff for one day and put a rate study together. Of course, we'll go to water for 1,500 dollars. So that's what we want to do is we want to have them come in one day, work with us, Kyle and I, maybe Greg, we'll put a rate study together and what we said has been when you're here putting it together, you can understand it and defend it. So we'll wait till we see what we deal on that capital project information from Golden Lake because that would be essential or it could be used in this rate study. And then we'll move forward with Minnesota Water after that. So that's the plan.
Okay. Annexation of water and sewer improvements. I don't know if you looked at any of the figures there. And this would all be assessments to these property owners, right? That's going to be hugely expensive. I don't know, did they come to ask for this information or what?
One of the things that happened there was Bill Drew was hooked into the RA. And now he's a property owner next to him. They have purchased that house. So they have three years to upgrade the center of sewer. Well, they want to hook into the sewer too. And we don't want all these little spider webs going to our manhole. So we thought we'd bring it back here and do a special again. We wanted to, we just annex them in and then provide sewer water in the future. I mean, they're surrounded. It's always surrounded by city properties.
That's true.
So I guess there's two separate issues. You can annex them in to the city without bringing on the center of sewer water and do that in the future if we want to. But we know that that person's going to have to upgrade his sewer within the next three, or his second. So he was just trying to find a way to do it without putting in any second system.
Are any of these homes opposed to being annexed into the city?
I mean, should imagine they all are.
Yeah, because they're going to end up paying city taxes as opposed to county taxes.
Right.
So they probably don't want to be annexed in. But I don't think they want one. The former paid his assessments.
I'm still paying them mine.
So.
It's just here for discretion.
The issue with that area is it's going to be the same from now until the end of time is that, you know, you look at the situation right now, it's completely surrounded by city property. So in essence, they're kind of getting the benefits of living in the city without paying the taxes that the other city residents do. The issue with the utilities is always going to be the configuration of those lots where you have kind of rural-sized lots all in a row and it's only fronted on one side of that gravel road. So, you know, to the project that went by you is unpleasant. Those assessments where you had, you were assessing both sides of the road and you were assessing a portion of the project cost according to the city. a portion of the project cost, um, according to the city's assessment policy. The way this is laid out is if you were to extend new services, you would assess a hundred percent of it, and it makes it very difficult to make the, make it a feasible project for an individual property owner when you have only a few, few properties to share in the cost, and it's still a fairly long extension to go from one end to the other. And so, that scenario really doesn't look like it would change in the future, because you have the school on the west side of that gravel road, and then, you know, those properties, so short of it redeveloping. So, anyway, just to point out, it's, it's kind of a dilemma that, that doesn't have a, a real easy solution to it unless the city was to ever, um, decide that there was a public benefit to getting those people on municipal services and, and, uh, sharing in the cost. Otherwise, uh, that, those property owners are gonna be, that the first thing is gonna be they're faced with, uh, they're failing septic systems, need to do something, which is, um, potentially just having to build a mound system or redoing their septic system, which isn't cheap. Um, that's why, when we, we looked at it, we looked at it kind of two ways. One, providing full municipal service with water and sewer service, traditional gravity sewer out there. Uh, the other option is if, if the immediate issue is truly just to address the sanitary sewer issue, you could potentially do it by just putting a, a forced main out there and, and letting them put in their own individual grinder stations and hook up to that. Again, uh, the assessment comes down, but there's some cost then to the property owner to be able to, to do the work on their end to, to do the plumbing and get connected to, so.
To my way of thinking, it would, as far as from a safety standpoint, we might as well wait till that property, to the east of them develops, till the developer comes in and takes that over, let's put lots in, and then till that developer, you take over all this stuff and do it that way.
Take over what stuff?
Well, take, what, uh, what their infrastructure and, and take, and put this little bit of the infrastructure at the same time.
If, if you, uh, if you have that negotiating power with them, I could certainly ask.
Well, it, it's, would be, I mean, to us, for to do it right now, doesn't make any sense at all.
It, it, it's a, it's a tough deal, and, and the problem gets to be is, you know, as soon as, as soon as the first one replaces their septic, you're done, because now, now you've, you've dropped even one more property off of this deal. You already don't have Drew, because he's already hooked up, so anyway, it's, it's, the timing for the discussion is now, because you have a property that's kind of faced with this issue. Once, once they upgrade their system, then you probably are.
I suppose you share with the property owner what the cost would be.
Well, the other, the other thing is that if we do the waters, it gives us another way to be able to provide water to Fieldstone, because right now we only have one main up at Fieldstone. Providing water service down that road and connecting it back to Fieldstone gives us another way to be able to service the home, to loop it, right?
Right, there is a benefit from a water system.
The benefit to the water system.
Yep.
So is that reflected in the cost of the assessment then?
No, right now, it, it assumes that the cost would be a hundred percent assessed.
But if you took that, you took part of that cost out as a benefit to the city, you're still a pretty big assessment as far as the sewer water, the sewer is concerned.
I mean, you, you don't take, oh, go on, sorry.
No, I would just, is it, it's prob, is it cheaper? Because I don't know the cost of either. So like, let's say, every home within the next five years had to be updated, is it still cheaper for them to do it on their own? You know, like, is it the cost?
Yeah, potentially short-term, but long-term, then, you know, once you're hooked up to the city service, um, then you're hooked up, but, uh, you know, it, it all depends on how, how much work they have to do on their own property to hook up to the, the system. If, if they, um, if they already have a grinder pump in place that's pumping to their existing syst, system, and they just need to extend the pipe, that's probably pretty cheap if they actually have to go and, and kind of replumb everything, you know, then you're potentially looking at close to thirty thousand dollars, again, total pro, the project cost, and, and you certainly put in a mound system cheaper than that, even though a mound system's probably still could be fifteen to twenty thousand dollars.
Because Sam Hickeyhead came to the city, he lives right next door to Bill, and had his, his four thousand dollars, he came like, just in the, uh, or something.
I remember, I lived here, so.
Yeah.
Well, I suppose you need to share the cost with them and tell them what this is what it is, if he's still, but, uh, interested in it, and maybe it's, um.
And, and really, you'd have to get them all on board or, or kind of force it on them, uh, because it certainly isn't feasible for one person to take the cost on for themselves.
He, for some of these things, will have to be worth a pursuit, I guess, then maybe they can get together the other.
I don't think they actually are, sure, I think they would need to come in.
Find out where everybody is with their, with their septic system.
Well, at some point, it's gonna be a, uh, it's, they're gonna be in the city, and do you want, is it okay for you to have that little island in your city to have rural services?
Right, so that's what the, the option would be, once that does start to develop there.
Let them keep their well and upgrade their septic.
Sure, until it fails, and then they have to hook in, and then you have all the hook up there, or you have to, I mean, how do you ever catch up?
Yeah, and that's just it, is that's kind of the timing of this, is, uh, kind of seems like you're either gonna, everybody's gonna be on board, try to work together, figure out a feasible solution to, to get them hooked up now, or, you know, somewhere down the, the road, uh, in the future, address it again.
There is a benefit to them as far as potential resale value.
Oh, sure.
I mean, that's a big benefit, so, I mean, it's worth it to talk to them and do a better thing, we can't do anything.
If you have the good mound or, or septic system, that's only good for, for, for the, we're not gonna have to do it again, or if one's a septic, that's, that's, that's kind of, you know, water.
And I don't know what kind of water quality they have, those sorts of things, but, uh, yeah, you're absolutely right. Theoretically, there's a benefit to those properties to be on municipal service versus what they have now. What value they see in that, or, you know, how their finances, uh, work to make it feasible for them or not, they, you know, difficult to say.
But it would be easier, or more beneficial to us if they were annexed in and, and on city water and sewer.
At some point, it's an island in the middle of your community, and if and when that gets, you know, I, I guess that's up to you to decide whether or not that's a concern or an issue, or if not, now when, kind of a thing.
Right, that's just it, if not, now when, because once they start replacing them, then we're gonna decide down the road, well, no, now you're gonna get annexed in, and, so then they're paying for it.
You could just annex them in, too, you wouldn't have to provide sewer and water to them, so, you could bring them into the city first.
Right.
If the city did do this project, and if we chose to do this project, and we assessed the property, they can defer that payment assessment until they sell a property, can't they? No? So would, do we know what the?
Elrude was done.
The assessments, or, not the assessments, their annual payment would be?
I think, I think it was estimated in there somewhere.
A thousand dollars or something like that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, and, and I'm trying to think, was that over ten years? Um, yeah, that, over a ten-year period, so I guess, you know, that, you know, essentially the, the city's the bank on this deal, would you, would you be willing to, uh, to, to let them pay that out over a longer period of time, knowing that it's a long-term deal? You know, where, where it gets, uh, concerning with, like, a road project as well, you don't want to stretch the assessments out so far that the day you pay it off, you come back with the next project, because the road's thirty years old. Um, the utilities have a little longer life than that, so you, you could potentially stretch that out.
I hope so, because it's still paying.
Yes. The road still looks nice, though.
Well, I guess based on this information, we should invite them in and see if they can.
Yeah, I think that, that would make sense to invite them in and go over with them and tell them, you know, at some point, it's gonna happen if, and if, if one is failing, I suppose the others are kind of on the cost.
They think Klein probably, when they sold, they probably had to upgrade that one.
That's probably true.
Maybe now we can find out.
The second one from the sound.
Or they have three years from the day that they have to upgrade.
Al Klein sold too. He's the reason we started the conversation in the first place a couple of years ago. He was gonna sell his property.
And.
Drew wanted it, he was, Klein was gonna sell his property, and he didn't, he thought that was gonna hurt him, and now in the meantime, someone bought another, Klein sold, and someone bought another property up in that place, two houses sold up on that road.
So Klein put a bounty.
I believe he did, I can't remember, I mean, just from conversations in town, I, I believe that's what had to happen, I can't really.
And in all of this, it, it, the road's not addressed, you know, it's a gravel road.
But it's a private road.
Right now, it's a private road, yep.
So that wouldn't, it would still stay private if we just annexed them in? I guess if it was me, I'd wanna take little slow bites at a time. I don't wanna get annexed in and have the assessment, you know what I mean?
What's the positive of, to them, being annexed in to the city?
Nothing.
They just have to pay more in taxes.
Yeah, that's right.
But, but, yeah. All the benefits.
Right, and that, that's what you got.
They have benefit all.
So if they get annexed in, that doesn't increase the retail value of their home?
It's a private road, it wouldn't win.
Well, if it was annexed, not in a, really, I think, without having city sewer and water up, doesn't it?
Those assessments, yeah, those are.
I think city sewer water would increase their value, or help it out.
So again, yeah, long-term, are, is your city gonna, as it continues to grow over all, over how many years, is it always gonna have a little donut hole in the middle of it?
Remember when, remember when we had, um, Edna Ernst, and we had, and it's like, that was the biggest pain in the neck, had that little, yeah, so we finally got them in, well, now we've, now we've got it even worse. Maybe we should annex them in first and be done.
I don't know.
Anyway, that's why it's here, for your thoughts and consideration, is, is the.
You can fix around them, we can take them, we don't even have to ask them.
I know, and, and really, when you think about it, as we improve all that area around there and build the roads and stuff, they're using them.
Well, yeah, look at the roundabout.
That's true, yeah.
Yeah, as soon as that's hooked up, and, and, and.
They're getting benefits from everything we're doing.
Yep.
I think they should come in.
Anexing would be in order, yeah.
It would be, for that reason.
Right, because they're gonna get huge benefit from that now.
You have the gra, I mean, if their gravel road is gonna be paved.
Be paved, yep.
Do you want me to start preparing stuff for annexation?
I could see that.
Kind of what I hear you saying?
And, and I could see, talking to them, say, okay, we're gonna annex you in, if you want sewer water, here's what it is.
We'll do that.
Well, you know, from a process standpoint, how do you, how do you wanna do this? Do you wanna send them a letter that says, oh, by the way, come to the next meeting, because we're having a public hearing, do I annex you, or do you wanna have a, invite them to a work session to, uh, ease them into this?
Work session to ease them into it, and, and let them wrap their mind around that this eventually has to happen, just because of the way the city's growing, it's going to have to happen.
I think there's, there's good reasons for the city to pursue this, and, and to be fair to them, it would be good to invite them in and, and lay those, lay the issues from the city's standpoint out for them, so that they can kind of understand.
Just let them soak it in, yeah, and understand maybe the benefits, the benefits for the future, and, but it has to happen.
Yep.
And, and explaining that their lots are larger than usual, that's why these facilities are so huge, I mean, it's a rational buying.
Well, and again, the timing of that, I guess, that, that, you know, you'll have to decide what, what to do with that.
But there are no assessments yet, but if we do invite them in, then can we get some numbers on what their taxes will be, and?
Yeah, we don't have to.
You don't know, no.
No.
I want them to know, though.
I think we have to be honest, yeah.
Be honest, they're gonna go up, but, but, they're usually a lot of city facilities that they're not paying for now, so, I mean.
Right.
They're gonna go up and then.
Yeah, and a nice blacktop, blacktop shooter grab.
I don't, it's gotta happen.
But, yeah, I'd rather ease people into it, and I guess if it was me, I, I think they all kind of know it, and it's not gonna be a big surprise, but.
Let's get them into a meeting or, or, I have to ask them to come to a meeting, and we'll explain the fact of the annexation, and give them some preliminary figures on.
Taxes.
Oh, I'm not sure about taxes necessarily, but on.
Utilities.
On the assessment, utilities.
Sure.
That they could think about, and like, I mean, you're spending fifteen, twenty thousand dollars on a mound system, that is not gonna last that long, I mean, it's not.
Digging another well.
And dig another well, which is, right. Okay, so do I set it, you want to just invite it to a work session, or do you want it to be in another meeting? Special meeting for this, or not, just work session?
It's up to you.
What do you think?
Yeah, you can't take an action in a work session, so if you decide that you wanna do it, then you have to, you know, maybe you just wanna gather information, then a work session would be appropriate.
I need to start a work session.
Work session?
You wanna do it for a work session in February, or you wanna do it in March?
February.
Because we're, are we doing one work session a month, or are we gonna continue to do?
No, we only did two because we have a council appointment.
One a month, that's.
One month. We only did two for January because we have those council appointments for that, to take in there.
Okay. So it'll be the second meeting in, that's the one you, okay?
Yeah, so second, second meeting in February, work session, invite them to that, hopefully. Okay, um, just a quick, any on, worth any on, something on the electronic device thing. Loanne talked to Frontier, there actually is Wi-Fi here, but they don't, she doesn't know what the password is, but you actually, we actually need a router here after their modem, after their unit to service the firewall, so we need to get a, get a router here, which is about a hundred and fifty bucks for a good one, and that's, and that, that'll provide us, that'd be a Wi-Fi router, uh, we'll try and get that order here, get it installed, uh, now it'd be, they'll provide us with Wi-Fi, at least in the offices here. Now, we can always go further with putting it out into the rest of the building for general use later on, yeah, too, but at least we get Wi-Fi in here. Um, on the device thing here, you can just do this.
Homework.
No, this is real quick, this is real quick, just three check marks is all you need to do.
Sorry.
There was some discussion last meeting about, give one to Loanne, too. Um, device input options, okay, for note taken during a meeting, so during a meeting here, I, I broke it down to two things, either during a meeting, do you prefer a stylus or do you a keyboard, and there are things that use both of them, so there are tabs, or devices alternate that use both of them, so it really doesn't make a difference, I just can get a handle of which is more important to you, which do you like. Likewise, device ops, input options for work outside me, if you were working at home, you wanna make some notes or stuff like that, would you prefer a keyboard or stylus again, to do that? Uh, do you need a case? Um, yes or no? I myself, I don't, I've got a couple of backpacks I can use, so I don't need a case, but printing, you know, with a goal being to get as much stuff done electronically, um, and to limit printing costs, okay, you want, do you need to be able to print, select to print your own printer if need be, or as long as I can read PDFs and save notes and advice, I can get along without being able to print locally, and if you need a lot printed, I would suggest going to city staff and ask them to print it for you, that way it's in the city budget, city costs and so forth. Um, the basic assumptions.
We can have them hooked up so that they recognize that printer, right?
Sure, yeah, and they, we could print from, to this printer here, that could be hooked up to, to, over the network, is, without any doubt. And basic assumptions I had is, you know, we want some of that ability to read PDFs, because that's kind of a very easy way to distribute stuff. Built-in calc, and most of them have apps, you can get, or go work with that. It's gonna be Wi-Fi, not cellular, because cellular would be expensive, we don't need, as long as you get a Wi-Fi down here, we're in good shape with that. Uh, productivity software, I, while I use Office, I'm not a fan of paying for Office because it's expensive, there are some good free versions of Office available that, that actually blend well with Office and are totally free. So, you know, for a limited amount of use that we make giving it, I don't know that we'll spend Office, but that's a discussion we could have, if we wanna spend the money on Office or not. And then a memory processor, I guess, just something that's gonna handle our needs comfortably, that, uh, we don't need to get all that nitty-gritty right now, as far as do we need thirty-two gigs, or sixty-four gigs, or two thousand gigs, so.
Music are you gonna play? Is that on your checklist?
My son reminded me, he worked for a company, and they were out in San Francisco for two years, and they bought a one gig hard drive at that time, it cost them a thousand bucks for one gig.
Wow.
He just bought a two hundred and fifty gig backup drive for sixty bucks.
Yeah.
So, these first three come on all computers, don't they?
Yeah, the first three, a lot of them now are coming.
Well, Adobe's free.
Yeah, right.
Calculators are built in usually, and show us Wi-Fi capabilities, so.
Yeah, and there are, uh, I, I prefer. Yeah, and they're, uh, I, I prefer things other than Adobe, I don't like Adobe, I, I use a different one that I think is much more, much handier, so, Foxit reader.
What is it called?
Foxit.
Is it free?
Yeah, that's free, F-O-X-I, X, F-O-X-I-T, it works real well.
Adobe is hard to...
So, anyhow, if you could just give me your thoughts on that, so we can proceed on this a little bit, um, again, I have, I liked with this, and when I, again, looked at the packet this time, it was eighty-three pages, I think, was the agenda, council agenda, and a work session is eighteen pages, so that's over a hundred pages, that, uh...
Um, is there productivity software like Office that cities can use, and then just kind of buy a package for X amount of computers?
Yes.
At something that is, that's a decent price?
Uh, you could, you can get an Office subscription, yes, you can get an Office subscription that is probably fairly economical, and if you get everybody on to it, it's fairly reasonable, uh, then it is Office, it's, it's Microsoft Office. Uh, there are some free things that I've used that are, that work real well, too, they just look a little different once in a while, but, although, actually, some I think are copied directly from Office, they look so, so similar, it's crazy, I'll be able to get away with that, but anyhow, but, uh, yeah, there's...
It's like Microsoft Office that opens up documents on my home computer, it's not Microsoft, but, again, I don't need it.
Yeah.
And you can open up any Word document or Excel, or PowerPoint, in that.
The only, the only limitation it has, is if you have some really fancy formatting or really fancy formulas, which we probably won't have.
But the maps and the things like that?
Oh, that all, no problem, that's all, that's all PDFs.
Those are PDFs?
Yeah, that can all be done with PDFs. So it, um, and again, the, the productivity software is basically, I mean, either Word processor or Excel spreadsheet, is about the extent of it. And, uh, and all of those are very compatible with Microsoft Office, even if they're free. There's one that's called WPS, another one's called Libra Office, and another one is Open Office Suite, and they're all totally free. So, so anyhow, I guess that just gets some, you know, just to give me some idea what to look for, and I can come up with next, hopefully in the next meeting, with some device options that would, maybe see if it'll serve our needs and some prices, and we can kind of go forward from there.
So, do we get the packet via email on the device from you, and then it would have that then?
Yep.
Would have to have the email capability on Wi-Fi.
Yeah.
Or I can load it up to the website, and you can go out and get it.
Or she emailed me my packet, you know, so I've, that's what I...
Email Jerry's, too.
Yeah, so that's what I use, is just that PDF with all the attachments on there.
Yeah, and I, I have to say, I really like, and I've got two of them side by side, I, I go through, I go through and index one of them, so I could, you know, page numbers to, so I could scroll, if I'm looking at my agenda, I know exactly where it's supposed to be on my...
And I can add that, eventually.
Well, could you like print off just the agenda, so that we can use that of a...
You can do it everywhere.
Oh, just one page, one page, sure.
Yeah, just, we could always just come with the first, the first piece of the agenda, so I'm not, not to page one, to be like, oh, where are we?
Find the agenda, where are we?
You know, and then I can just wait on that, and like...
Or I could maybe modify the agenda, have the page numbers of what the items do, somehow you can have...
Yeah, I can just click, look.
Yeah, so mine, if I've got, I went through today and indexed them all, so it's, my numbers here, these correspond to...
Yeah, really cool.
By the end of the year.
The page on your PDF list.
Up here, uh, where is it, right down here, page seventy-nine, so, if I want to go to this Twins Youth Clinic, uh, that's sixty-six, I say?
Yeah, everything seems to be right out there, like...
So, right there it is, there's a Twins Youth Clinic thing, and I just indexed them, I told you about ten minutes' indexing today.
Set up.
Side by side, I just put one, one here...
Well, you gotta read it anyway, so you might as well...
Yeah, read it, I'll see if you can...
Index it while, while you read it, so you know, that's a good idea.
Yeah. And if, if Luanne can, if we can work with Luanne to come up with a page number system...
And then also, it can be projected up there, so everybody knows what we're talking about and what we see.
So, okay, if you've got some, you know, input on this thing, just give me this, so I can, just give me some sense of what we're looking for, because last time I got the idea that this is...
Did I get all your consent?
Yes, you did.
Oh, sorry.
A teacher, yeah, I get it, I get it.[1785.13]